Order, we're gonna have invocation by Councilman PT at this point, what we say.
Could you bow your head? Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us to see another day, Father. Father God, we thank you, Lord God, for protection. Father God, we thank you for your grace and your mercy, Father God. Lord God, we pray, Lord God, that as we, Lord God, sit in these positions, Father God, that you give us wisdom, Lord God, to execute and judge well. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge by Councilwoman Washington Eli.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes of the August 24th, 2020 meeting.
Mayor, I move to dispense with the reading of the August 24th, 2020 minutes and ask that we approve those minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Eli?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next thing we're gonna do, and it's kinda got just a little bit out of order, we wanna go ahead and take care of it, get it out the way, number six, which is a proclamation.
This is proclamation number 59 on the agenda. Proclamation declaring September 2020 as ovarian cancer awareness month in the city of Natchitoches. Whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women and accounts for more deaths than any other gynecologic cancers, and whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that 22,440 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer every year in the United States, and whereas recognition of the warning signs are essential to an early detection and effective treatment. And whereas early symptoms of ovarian cancer are commonly overlooked, public awareness, acknowledge and knowledge are essential to getting a diagnosis before the cancer worsens. And whereas it is critical that those affected by ovarian cancer have the proper resources and access to health care to prevent, detect, treat, and ultimately defeat ovarian cancer and all cancers, and whereas ovarian cancer and the hardship it brings have affected too many lives, this month, the city of Natchitoches stands with everyone who has been touched by this disease, and we recognize that all those committed to advancing the fight against this cancer through research, advocacy, and quality care. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor, and the Natchitoches City Council do hereby proclaim September 2020 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Natchitoches and encourage all citizens to honor ovarian cancer patients, survivors, their families and caregivers, and remember those who have lost their lives to this devastating disease. Signed, Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor.
This time, Chair, we hear motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 59.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
And Mayor Williams, we have a speaker, Ms. Leah Lance.
I just wanna thank you so much for letting us continue till. It started in 2011 on our campus at Ellis MSA, and then it grew to NSU's campus, but it started with the city, and you guys allowed us to bring ribbons to the bridge, and I didn't have any idea how healing this process would be for me. I lost my mom to ovarian cancer. We lost our mayor's daughter to ovarian cancer years ago, Mayor Joe's daughter, and all of you probably know someone who's been touched by it. So every time we raise awareness, we're not only able to help those who are fighting, but it does help those of us who have lost people we love. It's a very healing process. So they're old ribbons, but they have a new look. They were dyed this year. That's kind of exciting. And if you'll see the campus of Northwestern, the ribbons are going up, and the till columns happen tonight. So please if you get a chance to drive by and see the till columns. It's amazing to be from central Louisiana and feel so much love and support from so many parishes and so many places across here. So thank you for always supporting us, and I don't know what 59 means, but I'm assuming it's a good thing. Yeah, okay. And congratulations. Thank you so much for letting me be here.
Ms. Lance, on behalf of the mayor and city council, I want to present you with this proclamation. Can you get a picture of the name?
Sure. Oh, y'all, I criticized Chris Sammertany for not having all his masks during the picture. There's no one without a mask. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. For real. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks, Leah Lance.
All right, roll call vote.
Eli? Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, going back to number five, planning and zoning appeal. Applicant owner Braddix Johnson purpose the city council to review a decision of the Natchitoches planning and zoning commission at the August 18th, 2020 meeting that approved the application to subdivide 17 acres in section 50 and 56. All right. At this time, we will have public comments.
Please speak your, set your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Rick Harrington. Mr. Braddix Johnson owns 17 undeveloped acres in the city and wants to develop it. I and many of my neighbors are opposed to the plan. I would like to begin by showing you where we are and where Mr. Johnson's property is, and then explain why we oppose this. Mayor, do you mind if my wife passes out maps for you to look at?
Come, she may.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Okay, if you look at the large maps that she just passed out, and sort of in the middle of the large map is an area that says B&amp;A Holdings LLC at Ave. Does everyone see that? Okay, that is the 17-acre tract that is at issue. The street directly on the bottom side of that tract is Culbertson Drive. You will see Culbertson in yellow. Culbertson Lane, excuse me. On Culbertson Lane, there are two lots marked in red. The one to the far right belongs to Mr. Bloodworth, who is working tonight and asked me to speak on his behalf. The next lot belongs to the Fattor family. On the top side, or the north side of this B&amp;A Holding 17-acre tract, is a row of houses facing Ladee Drive. You get there from East Fifth Street, if you look in the upper left-hand corner of the map, to East Fifth. You can follow the yellow line, and that takes you all the way to Ladee. If you found Ladee Drive, look on the left end or the west end of it, and there is a lot in yellow. That's Mr. Braddix Johnson's house. If you go back to the right till you get to a lot in green, that's my house. If you go on down Caitlin Drive a little more to the right, or the east, there's Caitlin Circle. And Caitlin, as you can see, runs towards the bottom of the map a little way. And if you turn off Ladee Drive into Caitlin Circle, the first house on the left belongs to Dr. Aviles, next to it is Mr. and Mrs. Shields. For Ladee and Caitlin, water is drained through the city drainage channel. If you go back and you look at Mr. Johnson's house and my house, below them are the words "city drainage channel" and a blue line shown on your map running at the top of the 17 acres. Water in this city drainage channel runs toward Caitlin and then turns right and runs south along Caitlin. You may hear someone refer to this as a ditch. I guess it is, but it's a very big one. I would estimate that it's at least 30 feet wide at the top and 15 to 20 feet deep. This city, meaning city of Natchitoches Drainage Channel, is supposed to flow into a channel belonging to the Drainage District, which is not a part of the city of Natchitoches. To orient yourselves, look down at the very bottom of the map where the blue line is, and you see where Pizza Hut is? On Kaiser Avenue, the district drainage channel runs by Pizza Hut, under Kaiser, and north back towards Caitlin. At Caitlin, it takes a right turn, and it flows on out eventually to Red River, I guess. The city's drainage channel is supposed to flow into it where it turns right. My wife and I moved onto Ladee in May 2013. Mr. and Mrs. Johnson bought their house in August 2013, and the 17 acres in September 2013. When we moved there, we did not know there were flooding problems in the neighborhood. I'm going to assume that Mr. Johnson did not know about them either, but we have learned a lot since then. Ladee, from Mr. Johnson's house, all the way to where it runs into Caitlin, runs downhill. On the other side, where Ladee keeps going, it runs downhill to the intersection with Caitlin as well. Caitlin Circle runs downhill. They were planned that way. At the intersection of Ladee and Caitlin, you will see a green grid on your maps. That is the drainage grate that is supposed to catch the water, which is to flow into a catch basin below the street, then through an underground pipe to where it's to flow into the city drainage channel just a little distance from it. Water that runs off Mr. Johnson's 17 acres runs into the city drainage channel. That all sounds fine, except there are some major problems. The engineer for the Drainage District says that in a time of peak rainfall, the level of water in the district drainage channel is higher than the drain in the street at the intersection of Ladee and Caitlin. It's the only thing I'm gonna say twice, Mayor. The water in the Drainage District channel, if you'll find that on your map, at times of peak rainfall, the top of the water, the surface of the water is higher than where the drain grate is at the intersection of Ladee and Caitlin, which means that when the water, if it gets through the grate, it goes down to the catch basin below it, is even lower than the channel it's supposed to run into. That doesn't work. What that means is when the district drainage channel is full, it won't take the city drainage channel water. So the city drainage channel backs up and goes out of its banks. At the intersection, the water won't drain down, and so it backs up into both Ladee and Caitlin, flooding both streets. There is no subdivision in Natchitoches in modern times that did not have to be first approved by the city. Specifically, the drainage plan for a new subdivision development has to be approved. This past spring, the council voted down a proposed subdivision on St. Maurice Lane because of drainage concerns. So the drainage plan for Ladee and Caitlin had to be approved by the city before they could be developed. That means an engineer employed by the city looked at the drainage proposed by the developer and said that it would work. Well, it doesn't. Well, it doesn't, and it has never worked. I have consulted an engineer who says that a plan where the level of high water in the Drainage District Channel is higher than the street-level drain is an unacceptable engineering practice. The city is responsible for our flooding. If you will find my house on Ladee Drive again in green, in 2016, the water came inches from my, to the top of my front porch. My front porch is twenty-two inches high. To the right of my house is the Gilmer House, where there's a red square. His garage was flooded in 2016. Back at the other end of Ladee, where Mr. Johnson's house is, are three houses in red. Water went in, went in them in 2016. Now let's go down to Culbertson. If you see the house in the right on red where I said Mr. Bloodworth works, he's wanted me to tell you, his house has flooded three times. The water runs down Culbertson, it comes from Mr. Johnson's property, and it goes into his house. His neighbor is Mr. Fannor, who lives next door. He said that his carport has flooded, and the water has come up to his back door. Mayor, with your permission, my wife is going to pass out some pictures. This flooding that I'm telling you about is not a one-time event. I've referred so far to 2016, but these pictures are just some examples in recent years. If you look at picture number one, that is taken standing on, on Caitlin Drive, looking towards Ladee. If you see the last two tall trees on the left, very close to each other, that is approximately where Mr. Braddix Johnson wants to sell a lot for someone to build a house on. Page two, photo number two. I took this picture in 2016. It is a picture of the north half, excuse me, the west half of Mr. Johnson's property, looking towards Culbertson. That make, oh, and by the way, uh, this is only half of his property, but the other half was essentially the same underwater. That night, when it was too dark to take pictures, the water kept rising. What you see closest to you there is the drainage channel, the city drainage channel. Uh, Mr. Johnson's, the water in Mr. Johnson's property eventually went over the edge, the channel flooded, came back into our yard and in every other people's yards, and that's where those houses on Ladee, that's when they got flooded. Picture number three. This was August 27th, just a couple of weeks ago. This is standing, I took this picture standing in the yard of Mr. Shields, looking across Caitlin Drive, across the drainage canal, the city drainage channel, and where those trees are right there, and that water is, that's approximately where Braddix Johnson wants to sell a lot to build a house. Page, picture four, or page four? This is a picture, all, all of the rest of the pictures are on August 27th. This is a picture of the corner of, of the city drainage channel where it makes the sharp turn to go from along, along Ladee to Caitlin. That's what the drainage channel looked like that day. The first row of trees on the right is where Mr. Johnson proposed selling a lot to build a house. Page five is, is the view of the intersection of Caitlin and Ladee. Page six, my front yard. Page seven, from my porch, looking down towards the intersection of Caitlin and Ladee. And page eight, looking in the other direction on Ladee. Now you may ask, what does all this have to do with Mr. Johnson's application to subdivide his property? I've given you also a flat that was prepared on Mr. Johnson's behalf, and it shows what he wants to do, is to subdivide his property into one enormous lot, and then two smaller ones, and the two smaller ones are shown in pink. And if you look at the map that I gave you, I approximated where those two smaller lots Mr. Johnson's property, if you look at picture number two again, Mr. Johnson's property is essentially a large catch basin for rainfall. It absorbs as much as it can, and then the rest pools and runs off into the city drainage channel. Already, the channel cannot handle that much water in heavy rainfall times. Examples or pictures one, two, and four. Whenever you build a house or a driveway on a piece of property, and you cover the ground with buildings and concrete, that area cannot absorb water anymore. And if you build up the foundation of a house so that the house itself doesn't flood, you create a hill that causes water to run off. Three years ago, Mr. Johnson wanted to build a subdivision on the entire seventeen acres. The council voted him down. Now he has come back with a plan to sell two lots to build houses on. At the planning commission meeting, a commission member said, "That neighborhood can't take another teacup of water." Allowing houses to be built on property that already floods will just put, push more water into the city drainage channel, which means that in bad rainfall times, it will back up on us and on Culbertson more than it already does. I'll never forget the time, one time, my wife and I were sitting in our house, and we saw someone walk across our front porch. We ran to the door, and it was Dr. Aviles. Because of flooding, he couldn't drive home and was trying to walk around the floodwater. I think he eventually waded across Caitlin. Mr. Johnson has never said that these are the only two lots that he will want to sell for development, and so I have to assume he's trying to do this a little bit at a time. But I'm telling you, we cannot take another teacup of water in the Ladee, Caitlin, and Culbertson neighborhoods. And let's talk about Mr., about Culbertson. Mr. Johnson's proposal is to have one smaller lot on Culbertson for a house to go on. Culbertson already regularly floods on that end, and no one has ever taken care of that problem for the people who live down there. Building a house there will just add to the runoff, and it goes on them. And there's something else I need to tell you that I just learned today. If you will look at your maps below Mr. Johnson's property, below Culbertson, do you see the tract that says Nora, the Clement Nora Jr. property? Mr. Fannor, by the way, who's in the second house on Culbertson, said that the water coming up to his back door comes up from the Nora property because it holds water, and in heavy rainfall events, that water flows toward his house. A group of investors is now trying to buy the Nora property to develop it. I don't know for a fact, and so I don't say it is a fact, but I was told that Mr. Johnson is part of that group. Where is the water going to go on the Nora property when they build that land up to keep their own buildings from flooding and put concrete all over it? It's going to run on their neighbors, Mr. Bloodworth, Mr. Fannor, the Johnsons, and others. Then eventually, it's going to run into the city and district drainage channels, which in extreme rainfall events already cannot take any more water. The city of Nakadis has caused our problems by wrongly approving those drainage plans in our neighborhood. The city has a responsibility to all of us to not make it worse. What I'm asking you to do is to say that there should not be any more development along Culbertson, Ladee, and Caitlin until their drainage problems are fixed. I'm asking you to recognize that the city calls these problems, and that the city has a responsibility to protect us. The way you do that is by voting to deny Mr. Johnson's application for more development. Thank you very much. If any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other public comments at this time?
Mayor, just for the record, I'm Randall Smoke, CGS Engineering, and I'm representing Mr. Johnson. Uh, he is out of town, he's working out of the country, but just want to let anybody know if they have a question about this subdivision that you're starting to ask me.
Good evening. I'm Joe Payne Williams, I live at 200 Ladee. We're here to oppose the, uh, application that was approved by the zoning, uh, commission. In the initial, uh, application that came up in 2017, Mr. Johnson was proposing thirteen houses, or thirteen lots, on Culbertson. He's proposing one in this proceeding. There's no evidence before this tribunal that he's going to stop at one. And if this one is approved, how are you going to stop the next one? And how are you going to stop thirteen of them? And how are you going to stop the other thirty-plus houses that were proposed to go on the rest of the acreage in the proposals that he's made in the past? There's the old Chinese proverb that says, "It's never too late to turn around when you're going down the wrong road." Prior administrations have been going down the wrong road and were afraid or unwilling to turn around and stop the flooding by adding to the conditions that are there now and have been for decades. We're asking you to turn around and stop this and not go down this wrong road.
Thank you.
Uh, what we're saying is turn around, therefore we won't drown. But we have already made a mess of that same drainage.
Can we, can we have your name for the record?
Elvin Shields, 102 Caitlin.
Thank you.
As I inspected the situation after the storm the other day, it seems we have created a monster that we can never fix now. This represents our Hobby Lobby. Hobby Lobby drains into the same ditch. This is the Hobby, this is Hobby Lobby property, right here. This is the exact same ditch, same one. This is where we put in the seven, it took the seven and a half acres to develop Hobby Lobby, right here. This is it, right there, to be clear. All the water from that seven has been, have to go into this exact same ditch. Exact same ditch. And this was before any problems that we would have if Mr. Johnson developed here. So we have already created a mess on dumping water into the exact same ditch. We didn't get a lot of rain. We didn't get a lot of rain for Hurricane Laura, we didn't. This is standing in front of my house pointing toward Ladee. That's the water. We didn't get a lot of rain. This was twice as much during the six, two, 2016. That's looking down Ladee Street. This is looking up Ladee Street, that way, and you get an idea of the damage. But this is the Hobby Lobby. That's, you see the dirt back there? Now when that, you see how it's flooding here now into the exact same? As the drain, the water tries to drain and go toward Hobby Lobby, Hobby Lobby is already filling it up and is going that way. So it can't go anywhere because what Hobby Lobby is going to do, when they put all the concrete in there for that seven and a half acres, there's going to be a lot more water than that, and we didn't get a lot of rain the other day. So this is what that looked like. It comes down, and then it connects into the other one, and then it goes out the other way. It makes a T. Well, that seven and a half acres from Hobby Lobby is already backing everything else up already. So this is what you got the other day, and we didn't get a lot of rain. There was no idea what we got in 2016, no idea of that. So I don't see how we're going to be able to fix this with more development in that awful of paper. Obviously, I'm against it. It's already, other day, it ended up to my garage, and we didn't get a lot of rain. I thought we had finished this three and a half years ago, but we are back here and heading about, in about the same thing. And it's got nothing to do with Mr. Johnson's property. It's to do with the city, the Drainage District, and the parish will not attempt to clean up the drain, to rework the drainage where the water could move out before we can develop. We just can't continue developing on the east side of Nakadis without any drainage. So that picture there, you can, you guys could have it. It's a, it's a gift to the city.
Good evening. My name is Breland Ja, oh, I can take that?
Yes.
Oh, much better. Okay. My name is Breland Johnson, live on 729 Culbertson Lane. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to come here this evening and speak out about this situation with the Johnson, uh, properties. Uh, I'm in opposition of approving for further, uh, usage of this particular property. I live on Culbertson Lane, right at the I live on Culbertson Lane, right at the edge of Mr. Johnson's property, Mr. Braddock Johnson's property. We have a great concern about this as we've spoken at the Zoning and Planning Commission meeting. We've been meeting about this since January, January the third of 2017. We spent three years going over this particular project. Mr. Johnson had talked to us, he came and he wanted to do, convert it from R1 to R2 and build duplexes. Then it changed from there, I think, April, April the fourth of 17. He wanted to build homes there with the big oxidation pond or a pond to actually gather the water. Not an engineer, as I've spoken many times, but once that pond gets full, where does the water go? You know, it's there. We have a drainage system, as you've heard everyone talk about, that is inadequate. It doesn't allow for the drainage of our community. Like I said, I live on Culbertson Lane side. That water backs up over on our side as well. It's an issue, and it's an issue that needs to be addressed. We talked about in May of 2017, he came back with a different design to build houses of a different weight, and we're still gonna have an, I mean, a pond to gather this water. Once again, it's not gonna fix the problem. You know, I don't know Mr. Johnson's intent on the property. From what I understand, he wants to build a house, I think, off of Caitlin and one directly in front of my house on Culbertson Lane. Now, just talking, if it was me, and I bought seventeen acres probably at a reasonable price, I probably wanted to develop it. As we looked in 2017, each time he came before the zoning and planning, he wanted to build houses. He wanted to build properties. So in my mind, I'm thinking, even now, he wants to build one house here and one house there. He wants to develop that property, that there's gonna be houses sitting there. We've talked about it so many times, it's not gonna support that. As a person with just a little bit of common sense, I know each time you replace dirt with concrete, that water no longer has a place to be absorbed. So that means it's gotta run off somewhere. And where is it gonna go? To the drainage ditch that's already overloaded. Our concern from Culbertson Lane side, and I've talked to a number of people that live on my street, were unable to be here tonight, but they've expressed the same opinion. They are against this. They are against us, we're cutting off our nose despite knowing what's gonna happen. The drainage is just not gonna work. Until the drainage is actually taken care of, successfully fixed, to where water can drain, I would say no to any kind of development at this particular time. And I understand that's his property and things like that, and he has certain rights. But we also have rights too, that we don't want our property damaged because of the fact of us not doing the correct thing. We just ask that you listen carefully, because I think there's more people that wanna discuss their concerns about that. We just ask that you look at this and hopefully come to a decision that will be fair, you know, just for us. And that's it. And I sure appreciate the chance to come and talk to you.
Ms. Stacy, are there any other, did you have any public comments, Ms. Stacy, by phone?
I'm gonna see if anybody out there wants to talk to you.
And you said you didn't have anything by phone? Ms. Rock, I don't know if there's anything, Subplanting and Zoning Director, that you wanted to say?
Well, I do, just to be fair also to Mr. Braddicks for everything, that Mr. Braddicks did in fact present an application for subdivision to our Planning and Zoning Commission, and the application was approved by the Planning Commission. The application was actually in compliance with the city of Nacogdoches' subdivision ordinance and that the lots fronted on a dedicated street and that it met the requirements for a subdivision of a lot size of over seventy-two hundred square feet. The lot that fronts on Caitlin is actually over twenty-three thousand square feet, and the lot that fronts on Culbertson is over eight thousand square feet. So being that the lot or that the application is just for a subdivision, he was approved based upon the subdivision's ordinance in reference to what's required for a subdivision. Had this actually been a subdivision development, then his plans would have included plans for drainage, curb and gutter, and utilities. But Mr. Braddicks is only asking for subdivision to carve out three parcels of land. With that being said, that before the ground is broken for any number of reasons, there would be steps in place to make sure that drainage is addressed, utilities and anything of that nature is addressed before he can even move forward. This is only the preliminary stage of subdivision. Just for councils, the new members, I just wanna let you know that a subdivision is a division of lot tract or parcel of land into two or more lots, plots, sites, or other divisions of land for the purpose, whether immediate or future of sale or of building development, the dedication, granting, or construction of a road, highway, street, alley, or servitude through a tract of land regardless of the area. The re-subdivision of land hereunto divided or plotted into lots, sites, or parcels. With that being said, this summer, we actually passed what we call is, or amended, the Stormwater Ordinance. It's the ordinance of number twenty-three of 2020. It's an ordinance amending chapter twenty-eight point one of the Code of Ordinances entitled Stormwater Code by adopting sections twenty-eight point one, Article 10, subsections twenty-eight point one dash one ninety-two through twenty-eight point one dash one ninety-five for providing for drainage standards. In order for him to be able to build, he's gonna have to provide to us a drainage design requirement, he's gonna have to meet those requirements, he's gonna have to present a drainage report and stormwater storage facilities. In the drainage report, this report is prepared by a certified civil engineer, registered as a professional engineer in Louisiana, shall be submitted and approved by the Public Works Director prior to the construction of certain projects. The purpose of the project is to analyze the effect that a proposed development would have upon a rainfall runoff or the vicinity of the development to provide data to ensure that the development is designed to be detected from flooding, to provide data to ensure that the development is designed, is minimized flooding, and to provide data supporting the design facilities to be constructed for the management of rainfall runoff. Each drainage report must consider rainfall runoff from storms with a return frequency up to and including a one-hundred-year storm. The complexity of the report depends upon the nature of the development and the site on which the development will occur. A drainage report shall be submitted by an application requesting any of the following: Approval of a subdivision plat. Proposed subdivisions must develop a comprehensive drainage plan that addresses the drainage for the entire project site. Individual lot grading plan shall not alter to approve comprehensive drainage plan, a permit for grading, a permit to construct right-of-way improvements, a permit to construct any structure with the exception of single-family residential structure, and a construction of any drainage structure or channel. We also require a stormwater storage facility, except as noted below, development of all land within the city must include provisions for the management of stormwater runoff, water runoff, excuse me, from the property that is to be developed. This management may consist of constructing stormwater storage facilities such as detention basins. The basins and drainage systems shall be designed such that the peak post-development stormwater flow does not exceed the peak, excuse me, the peak pre-development stormwater flow. As a minimum, this flow shall be based upon a one-hundred-year storm. The development and commercial business shall provide for maintenance of the stormwater storage facilities such that they continue to operate as designed. The requirement for construction of stormwater storage facility may be waived in the following cases. Number one, the runoff has been included in the storage facility at another location. Number two, construction only of a single-family residential structure. Number three, development adjacent to a floodway or drainage channel which has been determined by the Public Works Director using engineering analysis provided by the developer to have been designed and constructed to handle the additional runoff flow without increasing the potential for flood damage on any other downstream property, and development of a parcel under one acre in any area where it can be demolished, excuse me, be demonstrated by engineering analysis that no significant increase in the potential for flood damage will be created by the development. Again, he is not requesting an entire development right now. The only thing that he's requesting is to cut three parcels of land from his seventeen acres, not for a full development. Before the development has to take place, he must meet the requirements that's proposed in our Stormwater Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Ms. Rock. I don't know if there's anything from the council before we...
Yeah, I'll speak, and I first wanna start off and say, 'cause it's been, I've heard, Rick Harrington's my uncle, so it's been mentioned to me, do I need to recuse myself from this? And I just, I wanted to state, I've reached out to the State Ethics Board, and they guided me to Louisiana Revised Statute 421102, which describes a public servant only has to recuse himself from immediate family, and it describes immediate family as children, spouses of children, brothers and their spouses, sisters and their spouses, parents, my spouse, and parents of my spouse. That's immediate family, so no uncles, aunts, grandparents, et cetera. So I just wanted to clear that up. In regards to our ordinance number twenty-three of 2020, the one we passed, the Drainage Standards Ordinance that we, it states, if you're developing a property, building structures, you do have to do the drainage report, you have to get an engineer involved to show you have zero impact on drainage, et cetera, et cetera. However, under subsection A, Part Four, it states, and there's an exception, of a single-family residential structure. So my understanding of that is he wouldn't have to later, if they're building a home, a single-family home, they wouldn't have to do the drainage report.
Actually, he will still have to provide plans that his architect, being that he's in a floodplain, he will still have to show base flood elevation and show how he's gonna go above what that elevation is requesting.
Okay, he just wouldn't have to do the more extensive...
No, but he will still have to show a base flood elevation above what's required.
Okay. And this is just a, this is really a tragic issue that's not Mr. Johnson's fault at all, and however, we have to deal with it. I hope we could go back in time and Mr. Johnson, before he purchased his property, did research as to the effects of the property, what the property has on the surrounding areas, but we can't, and he didn't, so that's where we are right now. I think as the city, we have to consider, if we move forward and allow this and the flooding worsens, we're opening ourselves up to potential liability and lawsuits, 'cause we know there's a problem there, a problem that's not fixed. And I've personally, on your map, on the day drive, for instance, about the location of Russell B. Invenoo's house, possibly Gus Johnson's around that area, I've personally been in a high-lifted truck, had to stop, get out, and waded down the road, water to my waist in the middle of the road right there. And so I've seen the problem personally, myself, and it's because of the failed drainage system. It is. And whoever the developer was at the time, I'm not privy of it, obviously didn't do it right. The drain, as was explained, is lower than where the water's supposed to go, and that's not how gravity works. So the water then comes out of the drain continuously. And I feel, I feel nothing can move forward until the city, we somehow, the engineers and the Drainage Board rectifies the issue. Now Hobby Lobby was approved because Hobby Lobby took the step forward, and they, with their engineers and the city engineer, and I believe the, and I'm not privy, I believe it would have to have been the Drainage Board as well, were able to show that they would have zero impact on drainage with their studies, 'cause they built a detention pond, they have their own drainage system they put in, and so they were able to show through their studies there'll be zero impact. And that's how that was accomplished and done. And Mr. Johnson is not, and will not, we've asked him to, and he won't do it, proposed that there'll be some sort of zero impact. I mean, whether or not by ordinance he's required to at this stage, the situation of that area and the history of it that we know is an issue I think we require him to at this stage. And so that's my comments.
Any other thing from the council?
Randall, you care to comment on any of that? Drainage impact? You were kinda involved both ends.
I would say you probably don't have a zero impact from Hobby Lobby, but I'm not privileged to there.
Right.
So at some point, you get runoff, and your detention pond gets to the point where you max out the capacity of your detention pond, which is the size of a hundred-year storm, and it's going to fill up to the point where you minimize that or you contain that water to some point. Obviously, most of that area in Nacogdoches is in a flood zone, and so your ordinances and codes require you to build structures, habitable structures, above hundred-year flood elevation, which most everybody does, but it sounds like you either had a storm that's greater than a hundred-year, or people along, that spoke to them tonight, actually built their house below the hundred-year storm elevation. I wouldn't pick that for cases, but in style, I was watching, and I hadn't heard of that directly, so. But they're saying codes that you're dealing with, theme of regulations, things, don't require streets to be built above that hundred years, they're only built to have the structure. So you have the, you have issues where subdivision streets in low-lying areas may cover where the house is dumping. So, you know, that's what we deal with in flood zone, especially in the flat area. And you know, the drainage stroke, or that drainage system on there, that drains all of that part of Nacogdoches. And it's, back in 2017, a lot of people came forward with pictures with all kinds of appliances in cars, stuff in the middle of the ditch, and so growl trees and all that. The ditch situation has not been handled by a individual or public party that creates backlog, so, you know, that's the situation we have.
I have a question. If you were to say, "Mr. Johnson, what impact will this house have?"
Well, the, there will be some impact, obviously, if you are...
What is it? I mean, if you're saying it's gonna flood, do you think it will flood their houses?
I'm sorry about the thunder flow of water. The impact of residential, of a house, of a residence, how it's developed is very minimal because it's small compared to the size of your drainage space, your lots. The houses that, in this case here, has three, basically built three houses. The impact of those three houses and the building on those lots should be a lot less than the Hobby Lobby, the other commercial developments, the other commercial developments that occur in that area.
What will those three houses, those flooding on the day in Caitlin?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Does she represent Mr. Johnson?
I do represent Mr. Johnson with this subdivision plat.
Can we, can we give the mic to Ms. Carolyn so we can hear what she's saying, please?
I'm just asking if those three houses would impact flooding on Caitlin and the day?
Same answer I had before.
What was that?
I think you have minimal, if any, flooding of those houses, because the additional impervious areas he's creating is so minimal.
And I wanna state that this was passed by Planning and Zoning, and it wasn't, Planning and Zoning didn't have full members there, the council, so it was... and Zoning didn't have full members there, the council, so it was a three-to-three vote, three yay, three nay. And so the, Mr. Whitehead, who's the director of, well, not, he's over the Planning and Zoning Council, he had to do the split vote. And so it wasn't a unanimous vote, it was down the middle.
So Mr. Whitehead, what did you say, Mr. Whitehead did?
Yeah, he did the split vote to pass it. So that's why it's appealed to us by homeowners, whether to agree with Planning and Zoning and let it move forward, or to disagree and stop it. This is what we're doing.
So the vote was three to three?
That's right. With Mr. Whitehead breaking the tie. Yes.
All right. At this time, the chair will hear motion.
I move to reverse the decision of Planning and Zoning and to deny the application.
Second.
Oh, Mr., oh, I see.
Roll call vote?
Well, he might...
Are you on the way to?
He might not have heard.
Councilman PT, the motion has been made to reverse the decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would agree with the appeal brought today, meaning that the council on this motion would be saying that, you know, Mr. Johnson cannot subdivide his land. So motion has been made, and seconded, roll call vote.
Eli? Nelson? Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
So motion carries. The decision made by Planning and Zoning Council, Commission, has been reversed. All right, next item on the agenda, Planning and Zoning, Mr. Nelson.
Ordinance number forty-four of two thousand and twenty, an ordinance declaring certain buildings unsafe and recommending that same be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code, authorizing notice to be served, fixing hearing date, and appointing curator to represent absentees. Whereas the city building inspector and the director of Planning and Zoning have filed written reports with the city council, declaring that the buildings listed below are in dangerous and unsanitary condition, which makes them unsafe and endangering the public welfare, and recommending that said buildings be demolished or put into repair to comply with the building code. And the first one is Alvin Arm and Monica T. Bradley, two seventy Mockenburg Lane, Grambling, Lot eleven, Block three of Ellis Dean Edition, twelve seventeen Dean Street. Second one is Corey Layfield, and that fiscal address is eleven twenty-four Allen Street. And three, Murdis Handy, of four oh three, four oh six Hedges Street, but the fiscal address, one thirty Howell Street. And I think two of these, one's already been brought down?
Correct. Twelve seventeen Dixie has already been demolished.
Okay.
One thirty Howell Street, they pulled the permit for demolition, but have not completed the process yet.
Okay.
Which one was completed, I'm sorry?
Twelve seventeen Dixie.
Oh, Dean Street?
Dean Street? You said Dixie?
I'm sorry, Dean Street.
Dean.
Oh, okay.
What's going on with eleven twenty-four Allen?
Eleven twenty-four Allen, it's a house that has been sitting there for quite some time. It's unstable, it actually has, it's sitting high off the ground, on, I guess you'd say it's something like stilts or whatever, and it's in deplorable condition, so it needs to come down.
Is there a motion?
Well, is there any, anyone here for any of these properties to speak on behalf of them?
I'm going to leave that alone. Can I turn in my corporate information? Let me say good afternoon to the mayor, members of the council. I think the last time I was here, we talked about House Street, the corner of House and West Street, there's a house at that corner that's unsafe, excuse me, and it need to be demolished, but I did find out, after I talked to Ms. Chantrell, the owners are now going to take care of their obligation to make sure it comes down, they have paid the fee, and it will be taken care of, I found out after I came in. But I want to make sure, Mr. PT, that it was taken care of. And since I'm standing here, I did leave a folder for you with the mayor, with everything where I left off, I bet it was appropriate thing to leave to the mayor, he would file it to you. Thank you all very kindly.
Anything else from the council?
Move to adopt ordinance number forty-four of two thousand and twenty.
Second.
All right, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving to some ordinance for introduction, number zero four six, Councilwoman Washington.
Ordinance of the introduction of the mayor of the city of Natchitoches to award for the bid for consultant soda of the water treatment plant, bid number zero six two eight.
All right, and these are just for introduction, so no motion needed or anything like that. All right, the next one, number zero four seven, Councilman Harrington?
Ordinance number forty-seven of two thousand and twenty, an ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. And I'm going to leave this open for explanation by our finance director.
We are amending the budget due to some extra revenue and due to some expenditures that we're having to do due to the last storm, that we're having to pay. Are there any, has anyone have any questions on it?
Do you know, are these expenditures, will they be possibly reimbursed by FEMA?
Yes, sir, actually, well, the CARES Act is the money that we receive, so that is our money, but we're having to use it to pay for the storm. And retrof, then we will actually get money from FEMA, or we're going to apply for money. Seventy-five percent of it should come back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, the chair will hear motion.
Oh, that's for introduction.
That's for introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry for the introduction. Okay, so yeah, so that would be the next item. So moving on to resolutions, number zero five eight, Councilman PT.
Resolution number zero five eight of two thousand and twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for liquid chlorine for the water treatment plant. Whereas the city wishes to advertise for bid for liquid chlorine for the water treatment plant, bid number zero six three two, where a seal proposes shall be addressed to the city of Natchitoches, to the director of purchasing, the city of Natchitoches Purchasing Department, fourteen hundred Sabine Street, Natchitoches, Louisiana, seven one four five seven. Whereas the city of Natchitoches will accept sealed and electronic bids for the project until two PM on Wednesday, October fourteen, two thousand and twenty, at the office of the director of purchasing, fourteen hundred Sabine Street. Whereas bids will be publicly opened and read aloud at two PM on Wednesday, October fourteen, two thousand and twenty, held at the above-mentioned office of the director of purchasing. Now therefore, being resolved by the council of the city of Natchitoches in legal session, convene that the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr., mayor, be and is hereby authorized, empowered and directed to order the publication of the above bid.
And I was just told that this is, you know, just something that happens, it's a regular occurrence with chemicals in our water, so forth and so on, so this is just something that happens. Any other discussion with council? All right, hear motion at this time?
I move to adopt resolution number sixty of two thousand and twenty, I'm sorry, fifty-eight.
Second. Motion has been made, and seconded, roll call vote?
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, number zero six zero, Councilwoman in large, Betty Smith.
Mayor, this is the resolution zero six zero of two thousand and twenty, which reads, "The resolution appointing Alex J. Washington as the city attorney for the city of Natchitoches. Be resolved in accordance with section four point oh two of the Home Rule Charter. The city attorney shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council, and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And it is further resolved, Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. desires to replace the existing city attorney, Ronald Corkin. It is further resolved that the city council does hereby take cognizance that Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. appoint Alex J. Washington as city attorney for the city of Natchitoches in accordance with section four point oh two of the Home Rule Charter. It is further resolved that the city council does hereby confirm the appointment of Alex J. Washington as the city council for the city of Natchitoches. I move for discussion."
Any discussion on this particular topic?
I guess I'll speak first, as a moment. And it does, it states section four point oh two of the Home Rule Charter, and I wanted to read, section four point oh two of the Home Rule Charter does state, oh, one second, it explains and gives a definition of what the city attorney's job is. And the city attorney shall serve as chief legal advisor to the mayor, council, and all departments, offices, and agencies, shall represent the city in all legal proceedings, and shall perform any other duties prescribed by this ordinance. The city attorney, as that reads, not only advises the mayor, for us, as council, for all departments, and he is the attorney to represent and defend the city in all legal actions, he is the man who has to be in court. This is a massive role that's not to be overlooked. Due to the fact that the city attorney advises not only the mayor, but as well represents the city as a whole, advises me, everyone, we as a council, I feel need to ask why this is needing to be done in this way. We have one of the best municipal defense attorneys in the state, he's experienced over thirty years doing so, successfully, I might add, and we just, we renewed the contract for our current city attorney, and through June of two thousand and twenty-one, we've had discussions and asked that Mr. Washington come on as assistant attorney, but we're moving forward with not doing so. I just, we just need to ask why? Why, if you could explain why this is happening?
And I guess I want to start by, Mr. Corkin and I had a conversation a few days after the election. I don't know if you want to speak to that conversation, Mr. Corkin?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, so Mr. Corkin called me and said that, you know, congratulations, and that basically that he would be transitioning from the role of city attorney, and that he would help in any way with whoever, you know, I would appoint as the city attorney of, you know, for the city of Natchitoches. So this is just a natural next step in the process.
Mr. Corkin, I have a question for you. Did you ever agree, or did you ever agree to stay on as city attorney? What I'm trying to say is, did you ever say you would be willing to stay on as city attorney?
In the conversation that I had Monday night with Mayor Williams, I called to congratulate him on his election, and to tell him that if he was more comfortable with someone else as city attorney, I perfectly understood that, and I would help in any way that I could to make that transfer as easy as possible. And then, over the next week or two, I had heard some people say that Mayor Williams says, thinks that you have resigned. And so, Mayor, when we met about a week ago in my office on another matter, I thought I had conveyed at that time that I was sixty-nine, closer to seventy than sixty-nine, and that I didn't want to be city attorney four years from now, I didn't want to be city attorney two years from now. But if you wanted me to continue for some period of time during the next year, that I would do so. And I would have, at that time, been willing to do that, if that was what you wanted, Mayor, and if you thought that would be beneficial to the city of Natchitoches. And so that was what I intended to convey.
And I certainly appreciate that. I just want to say that Alex Washington is my choice, and it's nothing against Mr. Corkin, but I just, you know, he's experienced in all areas regarding city government, and so that's a choice that I have made.
I have another question. Mr. Corkin, so you stated you would stay as city attorney, were you ever asked to stay?
No.
Okay.
Well, well, let me make sure I'm fair to Mayor Williams. On Friday afternoon, Mayor Williams called and asked if I would stay on as an assistant city attorney, and make Mr. Washington city attorney. That was something I had not thought about, and I told the mayor, I have no ego with regards to title. I don't care whether I'm called city attorney or assistant city attorney. But I told him I would like to think about that, and I thought about that overnight and called Mayor Williams back on Saturday, and told him that, I declined his offer and told him that I didn't think that would be in the best interest of the city for me to do that, because I felt like the department heads and the city employees would continue to call me, or to call Tommy Murchison, depending upon the issue, and that that would undermine the city attorney. And what I didn't say to the mayor, but I also felt, is that the city attorney, whoever that is, needs to have the ear of the mayor. And if I did not have the ear of the mayor, I thought that was an unworkable situation.
Mr. Corkin, thank you for all the years that you put in with the city in Natchitoches. I gotta, gotta say, I'm disappointed in how this was handled. I don't, have you, I'm not sure that the mayor's even met the rest of the legal team. And that's unfortunate, because we've got a lot of competent lawyers in good standing. And I just, I'm like Mr. Harrington, not really totally sure why we're even doing this. And, you know, I've got some questions for Mr. Washington, but I also have a couple for the mayor. Usually this position has always been filled internally, it's just a, I guess you can call it tradition. It's always been passed on to somebody that's worked with somebody else for fifteen to twenty years, and I hate for that chain to be broken, however, I realize things change. But again, back to the way this was handled, I didn't get the resume or the package until Sunday evening, which I understand Rose didn't either. But, so I reached out, I did a little bit online, and called some people and checked, and... checked, and, uh, you know, I have a question as to what Mr. Alex's, uh, status is. I think I know, but I'd like to hear from him and to hear what, uh, you know, are you currently on probation, or?
Good afternoon, council, community, and mayor. Currently, my office is on probation. I've been practicing law over twenty years, had litigation with Mr. Corkin, numerous lawyers around the state. I have represented, uh, the city of Shreveport. I've advised Mayor Glover, his administration, and their city attorney. I have advised, uh, Cattle Parish administration and their parish attorney. I've advised, uh, different councils around the state, uh, and administration. So, as an attorney, uh, for Cattle Parish, I represent all the boards, and I've been doing so for some fifteen years. I've been practicing law twenty years. And to, to, to address the question about the probation, um, I would say that was a growing pain. My office extended, uh, from Shreveport. In twenty seventeen, we were able to open an office in Texas. I'm not a one-stop mom and pop show. We have over ten employees. I have at least, uh, five attorneys working for me, uh, and a special counsel that I pay, not a, not a parish, not a city. We compensate them, so we're able to generate that. My son, Alex Washington, uh, the third, he's also an attorney. So, I'm not running a small shop. And so, there was an accounting error that took place. A lady made some mistakes with numbers, and as Mr. Harrington know, I, I had no control over that, it wasn't much money. They submitted to me an agreement that accounting error took place. I know Mal, she added wrong, right? If you, if you read the opinion, the chief justice of Supreme Court said that no one, you know, no client was affected. She said in her opinion that if, you know, she was making a decision, it was too harsh for, for our office to be placed on probation. I wasn't the only person placed on probation, we have partners in office, so the other partner was placed on probation. So, listen, I, that mistake took place. They submitted to me that agreement during COVID, right? It was like in March or April. The world was coming to an end, and they sent me a letter saying, you want to agree to this? And I, and it was an accounting error. And you know what? I said, yeah, at that point. I'm, I'm fight numbers, I'm not going to fight numbers, so I agreed to it. I agreed to the two years probation. We hired another CPA two years ago, and we learned of the mistake that the lady made. The lady no longer works for us. My partner, myself, over the last ten years, been voted top attorneys in this area. I've litigated cases across this, this state. I've litigated cases across in other states. A lot of my cases, you can, you know, made TV, my, some of my cases made TMZ. And while I was doing that, I was representing all the cities. I'm also a municipal bond counsel, and that is when y'all do those municipal transactions for the thirteen million dollars for your baseball park. I do a hundred million, I'm doing fifty million coming up. I go to the Capitol and represent entities, uh, St. Gabriel, I represent the city of New Orleans, I represent the mayor, the, the mayor of New Orleans. I've done all you can do in the practice of law. So, whether or not I'm qualified, most certainly, no question. You, you discussed and you mentioned about, um, you want to keep things the same. Sometimes, that's a good thing, right? But sometimes, we can make some changes. My, and to answer your other question about, um, you got good lawyers working in his office, I, I, I know Mr. Corkin, he's a good lawyer. I know the people in his office, I met them. I know Chris Galette that works in his office. My, my thoughts was not removing in the, the people that's in place that this community already trusts. But for some people who don't know, I am from Natchitoches. I grew up in Baytown Heights. I went to Natchitoches Central High School. I graduated from Northwestern State. I went to Southern Law School. I was very successful in law school, I was the best brief, brief writer. I was moot court, which is elite speakers. I represented the school in national competitions. I represent NAACP's in, in Dallas and Louisiana. Everybody asks me for advice, this council, no matter how you vote, when I wear that hat as city, city attorney, I'm, I'm advise you, I'm advise you, and you, you won't have, you know, any issues with me. I, I do my best for this community, I want to bring my family back to this community, and not only as an attorney, I want to hire people from the west side of Natchitoches in my office, show them the practice of law, no different than Eddie's dad showed me when I was twenty-one. I worked in his office, and I guess, when I was there, you were probably about ten or eleven, and he was, he, he introduced me to the practice of law, and that's how I went to law school. So, I thank Natchitoches for that, I thank Natchitoches for what they made of me, thank Mr. Winston for whipping me in Parks Elementary, what I'm saying to you all. I'm, I've been here, I've, I've represented people here, you can call around, I've helped people for free, I'm Natchitoches, and, and that's why I came back and, and, and hope that I can get the support of the council. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Oh, yeah.
Will you keep your offices in Shreveport? Will you plan to open an office here? How, how will you represent Natchitoches if you live in Shreveport?
Uh, it's, it's pretty easy. I, I'd be here in Natchitoches, we don't, we, we intend on opening office, uh, here in Natchitoches also. I had offices here in the past.
You said you didn't think?
Yes, 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 I did. Any other questions from the council?
I wanted to state, this isn't a question to you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um, I wanted to state, you, you mentioned, you know, um, I think Mr. Nielsen said, maybe keep things the same, you said sometimes it makes sense to make changes, and I totally agree with that, but we're just, we're just here because it has to be done by the book properly. And that's the only reason we're asking, we have nothing against you. You may be the most qualified man in the room, you know? And, uh, you certainly sound like it, what you just said. But, um, under section three point oh seven, subsection A two of the city's Home Rule Charter, it states, "The mayor shall have the power to appoint and suspend or remove for just cause all city employees and appoint of administrative officers, such as the city attorney." So, moving down Mr. Corkin and appointing a new, um, city attorney, we would have to have just cause for doing that to Mr. Corkin, because we extend his contact, contract through June of next year. The "just cause" is the important language here, that's what's, what's extremely important. And I know you know "just cause" is a legal term, which means for a legal sufficient reason, such as misconduct or negligence. You can't, a mayor, based on our, our Home Rule Charter, can't just come in and start getting rid of any department heads without just cause, without, uh, negligence or misconduct shown, um, neither of which are present here have been shown. So, that's, that's an issue we have that started before us. Now, I know, since then, we've received today, just because of, I'm assuming how everything's been, been handled and done, Mr. Uh, Mr. Corkin has now given us a letter of resignation. So, he has now resigned from office, or from, I'm sorry, his position as city attorney. And so, since he's resigned, we now have a position to fill. And any time a position is to be filled in the city in Natchitoches, um, based on our employee handbook, we must advertise for applications for said position. We've always done it, example, Parks and Recreation Director, we have to advertise, right now, the, um, Mr. Chris Post, the event center, who's leaving, we have to advertise for his position. And, um, our employee handbook does state, "If hiring from within, you do not have to advertise for applications, but if you're hiring from without the city, you do." And it does say you have to advertise for fourteen days, receive all applications, resumes to the mayor's office, explains how to go through that process. I think once we receive all applications or resumes, then we'll choose the best candidate, and if that's in fact you, boom, you're in. And that's just the process we have to go through, and be more than happy to vote for you. Therefore, I think the matter before today is just kind of moot, really, because we haven't done the advertising process, the fourteen day advertising process. We just have to advertise it. I, I recommend voting this down, not voting you saying you can't be city attorney, but just because we have to vote this down to move forward with the advertising process. And I think with the caveat that all council members receive each and every application and resume, um, because the city attorney advises us as the council, not only the mayor and, uh, and his attorney for all of Natchitoches. So, I think since he's our advisor as well, we must be part of the application process.
Well, Mr. Harrington, I, I know you read that portion of the charter, and I mean, I can defer to Mr. Corkin, but that it reads a little farther, which, which states, um, it should stay, and I'm pretty sure it does, except as provided by law or the charter. So, that just cause go a little bit farther. So, if you look down in four point oh two, the next step is that the city attorney serves at the pleasure of the mayor, which means that he can terminate, not on, I'm not terminating, he can request resignation, um, and terminate employees as directors, because they serve at the pleasure of the mayor, which means that once you have a new mayor who started a new administration, and he chooses to appoint those people that he trusts and he know, the, the charter and the constitution allows for that to take place.
It does, it does say serve as the pleasure of the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council.
That's why, I'm sorry, that's the purpose we're here, I'm just indicating that it's that the pleasure of the mayor is the actual kind of blurb, we need to kind of.
But every, every department head, finance department, serves at the pleasure of the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council.
That's correct.
Police department serves at the pleasure of the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council. Every department head is treated the exact same. Every department head has to go through an application process, based on our handbook.
Well, I mean, I, I would defer you, I'm not your council now, but, um, I mean, as I read the charter, uh, the mayor can make his recommendations to the council. They may have done that in the past, um, based on custom, but as you read strictly what the charter says, and that's kind of what I'm following, because I don't know your internal workings, but the, it reads that the mayor make his recommendations and the council can vote it up or down.
And, and that's true, and this was passed in nineteen seventy-five, and since then, there's been, of course, amendments, but there's been our, our city handbook that's been adopted since then. The city handbook outside this is what states that the application process has to move forward. And that, that's all, that's all, it's only a two-week application process, we have to do it with everybody, we've always done it with everybody, and it's just, just keep it fair and even, we just, that's just what we need to move forward with.
Well, I mean, again, uh, I defer to your city, city attorney, what, what the charter reflects, and y'all can kind of say.
Mayor.
Mr. Corkin?
I don't have a legal opinion on that. It's, there's only been one transition in terms of city attorney in the forty-five years that I've been practicing. When I came back here, uh, Tom Murchison was the city attorney, and prior to Tom, it was, uh, Arthur Watson. I think Mr. Watson went back to Frank Keyes, maybe. And so, when, when I was appointed city attorney after Tom retired, I honestly don't remember.
So, were you appointed by the mayor?
Well, yeah, I, I guess, the, um, I think the question, the question was whether or not the city attorney position from reading the charter requires a publication of an application, and I don't see that in the charter. And I saw.
It's not in the charter, none of them are in the charter, it's in the, the hand, the employee handbook.
Okay.
Yes, sir. You got it generally.
I'm John Winston, and I served on that first city council at Ron's notice. And we had to do just like the council was being asked to do tonight, to decide who the next city attorney would be. And it was a very contentious vote. Uh, Ron, you know that, uh, there was one guy.
One guy in particular, that I shall not call his name, uh, got very upset. There was no rule that said that we had to vote for any particular candidate. The mayor had made his choice, and we had to confirm or deny that. And that's the same question that you were being asked to do tonight, to confirm or deny the request. And we confirmed, it just so happened that Tom Murchison was the person that we all voted for, but it did not have to stay in the Watson Law firm.
Yeah.
It could have gone anywhere.
And that, that's the same with any, when we receive any, um, applications for a job opening, the mayor's office receives them, and the mayor's office goes through them, and then the mayor's office, after receiving the applications, makes the recommendation to the city council, after he receives all applications. The city council has the right to review any of them if they wish, and go through them, any of them, and, uh, once the mayor makes his recommendation, like you said, after we've reviewed them, if we wish, we can accept or deny.
We didn't have applications, we knew of people that wanted the job, who said they were interested, we knew them.
Yeah.
And therefore, that was all that was necessary. The mayor said, this is who I want, we voted, and it was just that.
Well, I don't know if that was in order then, but I, I'm just telling you what's in order now, what's in place we have to deal with. And so, I'm just, I'm just saying, we deny this, I'm going to move to deny this motion, not, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't sit up here and come up here and wait this long, I had to say something.
I thought you were just hanging out my bed.
Let me, if I can, Mr. John, I appreciate you, you've been working at this for a long time, but I do think there are some new rules and regulations since that was done. But my name, for the record, is Steve Cruz. I'm Ronald Corkin's law partner. I just want to thank him for keeping the city in great shape for decades of service. You've kept us scandal-free, you've provided excellent advice in a timely fashion, and Mayor, you'll find out that being timely is just as important sometimes as getting the good and right advice. But Mr. Corkin, no matter who it is, no matter who the administration is, no matter who the council personnel was, he's always given timely advice, he's given an honest advice, he's kept this city in, in great shape, in my opinion. And, uh, I'm sorry it had to come, come, come this way for you, you didn't deserve this. Mr. Alex, I've dealt with him many times, uh, he'll tell you that, and, uh, he's a, I think, a fine, uh, fellow as well. But, Ronald, you have done a great job for the city of Natchitoches, and we all are in your debt and in your gratitude, and no matter what you decide to do after today, no matter how it works out, I wish you the very best. Mayor, believe it or not, we all wish you the very best. We want what's best for you, and we want what's best for the city of Natchitoches, and I truly believe in your heart and your soul, you want the same thing as well. But I dare say that in my old gray hair, you will find that sometimes the best decisions are not the ones that you'll find as the popular decisions. But, uh, I know that as you grow and you learn, that you'll do the best thing for the city of Natchitoches, and we look forward to watching you do that. Thank you.
And, and I would just also thank Mr. Corkin for his years of service, he's been nothing but gracious through this whole process, and, uh, this whole thing is nothing against Mr. Corkin, just want to say that very clearly, there's nothing against him, and again, thank him for all he's done.
Good afternoon. In line, public comment. I spoke to the clerk, and told I, I had something I wanted to say. Tonight, uh, to the mayor, members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm more than pleased to be here tonight to address all of you all in reference to Mr. Ronald Corkin, Attorney Ronald Corkin. I do know Ronald as a man of integrity, he knows the law, he's well-versed on municipal law, and so many phases of the law. Uh, the city of Natchitoches has many cases that has been filed against them. Mr. Corkin is familiar with everything in reference to those cases, he's right there to get the information. He, uh, has, uh, resigned his post, as he told me, to date. And may I share with all of you all that we are losing a jewel here in the city of Natchitoches. I don't know whether you know it, Mr. Ronald, there was a special ed student that we sent, to your office with the mother, and she was trying to find some employment for him. We checked all of. Uh, we checked all over the city, couldn't get him placed because of his exceptionalities. Then you helped this young man, he has a part-time job with the city. And that made me feel well, because you took the time, you took the energy, and you got him placed. And I think that's the type of person we need now, however. I know Alex well, I've been knowing Alex ever since he was a little boy. But, uh, Mr. Corkin is a kind man, and he loves people, and he enjoys serving all of our people from a legal spectrum. And, uh, he has had an opportunity to work here in the city, and all of the information he needs is right here. And if we get a new person coming in, they would have to investigate, search for the material, and probably take more time than when you have a person that's familiar. And, uh, I don't know, Mr. Ronald, whether we can change your mind to get you to rethink this. And I want to go back to the charter. No, some of it was not handled properly, but I'm not going to get into that. We have a council. I've spoken to three. So, you all know what you must do. So, I just wanted to speak those kind words about Mr. Corkin. Now, however, you know, when you get up to talk, it's going to go out the wrong way. You know, she for this, she for that. We have Mr. Claude Bennigan, he was here a minute ago. I helped to get him appointed as an attorney for the city of Natchitoches. African-American, I know everybody in that law firm that we have down there. From Mr. Murchison down to Mr. Cruz, I know every one of them. I know what type of law they handle. And I feel that if we're going to get a lawyer to be a city attorney, then you need to get someone, I think, from here in the city, that has a lot of municipal experience. And I think that the record should be clean. Now, Mr. Corkin, I don't even know whether you know I know this. I had a problem once with an ethical problem. And you sit in on that meeting. And it's him sitting there helping me get that resolved. You know, you don't forget how people handle business. And you handle business in the right way, not for black people, not for white people, but for all people. So I wanted you to know how I felt about you as a person. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Hey, oh, we got more discussion, okay?
If I may please, good evening. I just wanted to s- say that, um.
Can you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. McGaskin. Um, I've lived in this city for nearly 40 years, and been on different, with the different organizations, and now I'm a member of the school board. And I would like to say, I'm sure that we do appreciate the time and service that Mr. Corkin has given to the city. And as he says, he's older now, and I'm sure he would be, um, ready to retire now, maybe. And I think that, um, the mayor, as I understood, and maybe I'm wrong, that each new administration that comes into the city has the option to chose who they would like to work with them. And I don't think that it's a disservice to Mr. Corkin. I think that each new mayor has had that option. And I think that's what Mayor Williams is asking for their consideration. I don't think that we should disregard the charter if it indicates that we have to do the application. But as Mr. Washington said, we needed to get some clarification on that. It doesn't have, this man is stating that, we know Mr. Washington, he's from Natchitoches. He's homegrown. Uh, he's quite qualified. You all heard him indicate all of the qualifications and experience that he's had. And Mr. Harrington has stated what we've always done, custom, sometime cha- cha- changes, changes now. You know, uh, we need to be ready for 2020. We've had to deal with situations we thought we'd never deal with before in our lifetime. We have a new mayor, a young mayor. And I, this is my opinion, everybody else stated theirs. I think Mr. Washington would do a phenomenal job, if given the opportunity. So I ask the council to please be open-minded. And, and yes, we do appreciate Mr. Corkin, he's done a wonderful job. And we do appreciate him. But it is time for change. And so, I ask that the council be open-minded and consider Mr. Washington. I think, as I said, again, he's well-qualified. And I'm sure he wouldn't have gotten up here and stated, and given all that information regarding his qualifications, if it wasn't true, because anybody has the, uh, have access to it. Thank you so much.
All right. At this time, the chair would.
Well, and I wanted to state, we're not, not considering Mr. Washington. That's not what we're here for today. It's just, we will considering when applications are made, after the 14-day period.
Yeah. Um, a- at this time, chair, we hear motion concerning this resolution, appoint Alex Washington. Is there no motion?
I motion.
You move to do?
To appoint Alex Washington.
Is it second?
I figure.
Our motion has been made and seconded to appoint Alex Washington as city attorney. Roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
No.
Smith?
No.
Harrington?
No, with a caveat that it's open for application.
PT?
Oh, yes.
All right, motion fails. Is there a, um, substitution or subsidiary amendment to this?
Yes.
We would need to, uh, make an amendment to, as the resolution is written. Is there an amendment to the resolution?
May I move to make an amendment to the resolution that we have the application, that Mr. Washington go through the application process? Now, we opened this up, uh, publish it in the newspaper for applications, to be fair to all. Not saying that he's not, uh, eligible. I know him well, I've worked with him for many, many years. Uh, but, running, we want to be, I said I wanted to be fair. I'm not here because somebody did me a favor. I want to be fair to everybody. So, uh, Mr. Washington, if you would submit your application, I'm sure we will look over that, and just be fair with everybody.
So to understand this carefully, this is a motion to?
Can I motion to him to be assistant attorney?
Well, hold on, one, one motion at a time. Uh, so this is a motion to pause Mr. Washington coming in as interim attorney.
Well, that's, that's been denied, yeah.
We voted on that, is that what?
Yeah, well, so she's, she's, so what is she making a motion to?
No, Rosemary's making a motion. I want to make a motion to appoint him as assistant attorney. I, now, I, my motion hasn't been acted on, I don't believe.
So Ms. Betty made a motion.
To have applications, to go through the application process.
To start the two-week application.
Right, and that hasn't been seconded yet.
I'll second.
So, this is, um, a motion for the two-week application process.
Mayor, that, that is a motion that is not on the agenda.
Right.
And so, I think.
This has to be amended.
And, and so, properly, the, I think the council needs to make a motion to amend the agenda, so that
So that we then can, right.
Miss Smith can make that motion, and, and that motion to amend the agenda has to pass unanimously. And assuming it does, then I think Miss Smith can make the motion that she just made.
So we need a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make that motion to add to the agenda.
I'll second.
Let's do a ro- roll call vote, and again, it has to be unanimous to make an amendment.
And to clarify, if it's not amended, then it's just denied.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the agenda. Motion made by Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Harrington.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, is that right, is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So we'll have a roll call vote. Um, Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Now we can have a motion.
That's right.
To, uh, specify particular changes to, you know, the one that's printed.
Well, this will be a new motion.
Okay.
Yeah, that one was denied.
I will make a motion that applications be filled out, that Mr. Alex Washington, Attorney Alex Washington, submit applications, and that applications be, for city attorney be advertised in the Natchitoches, uh, times, and open to all persons.
And I'll add, for, for specifics, for a two-week period.
For two weeks' period.
For our handbook, starting in the morning, I guess.
Starting 7:30 P, 7:30 AM, Tuesday, September 15th, 2020.
So this is a motion to advertise for a two-week period, and then, uh, make a decision on, um, you know, city attorney to be brought for, before the council.
That's right.
Do we have somebody second?
We need a second.
I'll second.
Uh, second by Harrington, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next and final item on the agenda is number 061. Councilman Harrington.
A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to extend that cooperative endeavor agreement with Kane River National Heritage Area Incorporated for an additional two-year term, noted as the second extension. Under said agreement, the city of Natchitoches provides employees to the Kane River National Heritage Area in exchange for the services and benefits that the city receives from the operations of the Kane River National Heritage Area. And I believe someone is here to speak on their behalf.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Blankenbaker, and I am the executive director of Kane River National Heritage Area. Since 2010, we have had this personnel agreement with the city of Natchitoches. In exchange for administration and payroll management, the Kane River National Heritage Area has invested over $1.8 million in grants and funding to promote the city of Natchitoches and the Kane River region as a heritage tourism destination, with $5.6 million awarded for grants, contracts, and operating expenses since 1999. From this investment, $39.4 million in leverage has been at, has been realized, with a ratio of seven to one. The Kane River National Heritage Area works to implement programs that engage community partnerships and provide leadership in heritage tourism, cultural resource management, and planning. As a premier partner of the heritage area, the city and the, and the heritage area have worked closely on community projects such as the awarding of a $72,000 grant from the National Park Service to conduct a historic building inventory, recently in 2020. In 2019 and 2020, the heritage area sat as the, one of the lead steering committee members for the pedestrian and bicycle master plan for the city. And in 2019, CERNHA provided financial and technical assistance to the city towards the development of the Grady Irwin Nature Trail signage. Additionally, in 2019, the city of Natchitoches and the heritage area worked to solidify the lease agreement with the National Park Service, with the Eagle Distributing Building and the Depot project, with the heritage area committing $46,000 towards the planning of the Depot project. So with that, I will take any questions. I know there are a lot of new members on the council, but we have greatly enjoyed our partnership with the city, and we hope to continue that partnership.
You all do a fabulous job. It's been a great relationship, and I can't wait to see everything on Sixth Street come to fruition. The Railroad Depot and Museum, and everything else that you do. Everything y'all touch seems to benefit others, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to the partnership.
Nothing else for Rebecca? All right, um, it's time to chair, we hear a motion, um, regarding this, this matter, this, um.
I move to adopt resolution number 61 of 2020.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, roll, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our next scheduled, uh, city council meeting will be, uh, two weeks from today, September 28th, 2020. Hopefully not as long as today's meeting. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, if I can. Uh, back to our first item. I would like to see us, as a government body, move towards looking at the drainage in East Natchitoches. We keep, and for the planning and zoning, we keep, people have the opportunity to apply, to develop property in that area, and they continually to get buffed like they did tonight. I mean, we've got to, if that's where we're going to continue building, we've got to address it as a city, and take some of the heat off of that, that department.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a, make a motion to adjourn.
We, we need a motion to adjourn.
I've motioned second.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, okay.